Today is Thursday, December 14, 2023. This town hall will be conducted by myself, Senator William A. Parkinson, Chairman of the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance, and Universal Health Insurance. This town hall is called to order, and its time is 6:15. For the record and to comply with the open government law, notice of this hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on Wednesday, December 6, 2023, and the second notice was also shared to all local media on Tuesday, December 12, 2023. Notice of this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website and the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal. Topic for discussion: GPA Damage Claims. The purpose of this town hall is to give the public and the people of Gigo the opportunity to file your damage claims on electrical appliances pursuant to Public Law 22-21. GPA customer service representatives are joining us tonight to help you on how to file a damage claim for any household appliances broken or damaged because of a power supply issue such as load shedding. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of GPA and their customer service reps tonight. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your cooperation, collaboration in this effort. And so we will now hear some testimony, ask some questions, and we will start by, I'll be giving a opening statement. Public Law 22-21 authored by my father, the late speaker Don Parkinson, sets the parameters of the appliance damage claims process with the Guam Power Authority when such damage is proximally caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by GPA. My father wrote this law to be consumer-friendly, and I wanted to read this law in its entirety so people understand the program. Authority liable for damage. The authority shall be liable for damage caused by electrical appliances and devices when such damage is proximally caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by the authority to a consumer, and when such damage is not a result of any negligence on the part of the consumer and is not a result of an otherwise defective appliance or electrical device. Except for computer equipment or equipment for which the manufacturer recommends that a voltage protection device, surge protector, or power conditioning device be installed by the consumer, the authority may not require to use the voltage protection devices, surge protectors, or power conditioners, and may not raise the failure to use such devices as defense to claims for damages arising out of voltage or frequency fluctuations or power surges. In establishing liability for damages pursuant to this section, the consumer need only prove that the appliance or electrical device was damaged by a variation of voltage or variation of frequency or a surge in power supplied by the authority. The authority may raise as an affirmative defense proof that the appliance or electrical device in question was defective or that the fluctuation of voltage or frequency or power surge was not caused by the authority but was in fact caused by the consumer's electrical wiring system or devices or equipment belonging to the consumer. It shall be an affirmative defense for the authority to establish that the quality of power delivered to the consumer's meter was satisfactory. Any consumer claiming damages from the authority who relies upon the provisions of this section must file such a claim with the authority within 90 days of the date of the alleged damage. Otherwise, except for the shortened period in which to make a claim, the procedures contained in the Government of Guam Claims Act shall apply the claims brought pursuant to this section to the extent not otherwise inconsistent herewith. This section shall be effective only as to damages occurring after the date that this section becomes law. So that's the entirety of the law. In today's increasingly interconnected world, reliability and consistency of our electrical grid are not just conveniences but necessities. Load shedding, while sometimes necessary to maintain grid stability, can have unintended and costly consequences for ratepayers. The damage to appliances resulting from such power disruptions can place a significant financial burden on households and businesses alike. In recognition of this, we firmly support the enforcement of a compensation program for ratepayers who suffer appliance damages due to load shedding. This program represents not only a fair and equitable approach to mitigating the adverse effects of power management strategies, but also reinforces the trust and relationship between power providers and consumers. By compensating ratepayers for such damages, utility companies can demonstrate their commitment to customer welfare and responsible service provision. This program is not just about financial recompense. It's about acknowledging the essential role that stable and reliable power play in our daily lives and the importance of protecting consumers from the unforeseen impacts of necessary grid management practices. It is a step towards a more resilient, consumer-focused approach to energy management, ensuring that burdens of maintaining grid stability are not disproportionately borne by individual ratepayers. In the face of the challenges posed by load shedding, it is not only essential to address the direct impacts on consumers, particularly in terms of appliance damage, but also to ensure that the processes governing compensation are rooted in transparency and fairness. Transparency in this context means clear, accessible information about how to claim compensation, straightforward criteria for eligibility, and an open and accountable process for the assessment and reimbursement of claims. A transparent program fosters trust and confidence among consumers, demonstrating that utility providers and regulatory authorities are acting with integrity and in the best interest of the public. It also ensures that all affected parties are aware of their rights and the support available to them, thereby enhancing the overall effectiveness of the program. Furthermore, transparency is vital in ensuring that the program is administered equitably with all claims being treated consistently and fairly. It also provides a framework for accountability where ratepayers seek redress if they feel their claims have not been handled properly. We believe that by committing to clear, fair, and open processes, GPA can significantly mitigate the adverse effects of load shedding on consumers and maintain a positive and trustful relationship with the public. To this end, I've requested records related to approvals and analysis from GPA, which my office has now received, and public processes require public scrutiny, and we will follow your damage claims filed today as they go through the process and ensure fairness and integrity. At this time, I'd like to recognize GPA. If you guys have any prepared statements you'd like to share with the village of Gigo, the floor is yours. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you, everybody who is here. I know that a couple of people actually came early, and they were able to see our representatives, or they took some documents and papers. We were able to speak with them briefly, and then they left. So I wanted to introduce ourselves. My name is Tracy Lim Tiaco. I'm the Assistant General Manager of Administration for GPA, and I have James Borha here. He is our Customer Service Manager. And in the back, if you haven't seen them already, we have a portion of our wonderful customer service team out there, and they're ready to help you. I also have Richard in the back, and he works with James for all three offices that we have. Just in case you don't know, GPA has three customer service lobbies. One right down here through the back road, all the way down to Mingilau. It's our Fidian Lobby. Then in Hagatna, we have the Halali Lobby. And then in Upper Tuman, where the GWA offices, we have a customer service lobby there. The customer service lobby in Upper Tuman is the only one open on Saturday. So I wanted to let you guys know that. So that's the only one open on Saturday. Senator, I want to thank you for allowing us to cooperate and come here. This has been great outreach sessions. Before I turn the mic over to James, I wanted to also let everybody know that we have a different claims process, too. So the damage claim process that we're here to speak about is under exactly what the Senator had said, 12 GCA Section 8120, specifically for appliance damages, oh, sorry, excuse me, appliances damaged by any irregularity in the electricity that comes into your home. That is different than, let's say, property damage not caused by voltage or any electricity issues. An example of that would be, sometimes we have downed power lines, and if a power line fell into your yard, for instance, and damaged your property, it would be under a different claims format. But this is definitely really important. We understand that sometimes the requirements that we have is to find a receipt, for instance, that we require for your appliance. Sometimes that's really hard to find. I admit it because I don't save my receipts either, or I put it in a safe place, and I forget where that is. So we understand it. And if you work with our team, you work with James. He's going to go through some frequently asked questions, and that is something that our team works with you on. So we definitely do have ways to make sure that you could file your claim. However, you must file it timely. So the law does say 90 days, and we're going to work with you to make sure that we get that done. Okay, so I'm going to turn the mic over to James now, who's going to help, who's going to read out some frequently asked questions. We feel that this is very important, and then I'll turn it back over to you. Thanks.
Good evening, Senator. Thank you. So I'll be presenting on the damage claims process and frequently asked questions. So about damage claims. If you believe your electrical appliances and devices have been damaged as a result of power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by the Guam Power Authority, you can file a claim. The claim must be filed with the Guam Power Authority within 90 days of the alleged damage. If it is determined that the damage to your electrical appliance was caused by something within Guam Power Authority's control, you may be eligible to receive compensation. So what is GPA's responsibility regarding a damage claim? We must determine how the incident happened, whether or not GPA caused it, the extent of your damages. We evaluate each claim based on the information you provide in our investigation, which involves reviewing the completed damage claim form, invoices or estimates and receipts from a licensed technician, assessment of the damaged appliance, reviewing trouble calls or logs, and meter data for any power disruptions on the date and time of the alleged damage. Who is eligible for a claim? Any GPA customer who has suffered damages that they believe are a result of power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by GPA may file a claim. This includes residential, commercial, and industrial customers. All eligible claims will be awarded to the GPA account holder. What types of damages are eligible for a claim? Eligible claims may include damage caused to electrical appliances and devices when caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in power supplied by the authority. It is important to note that outages without associated fluctuations typically do not cause damage to electrical items. However, our team at GPA possesses tools to assess whether the fluctuations in power to your home or business during the time of the incident. What types of damages are not eligible for a claim? Damages that occur due to acts of nature, such as typhoons, floods, earthquakes, lightning, or animal and insect infestations. Any damage caused by an act of nature is beyond the reasonable control of the authority and is not eligible for a claim. How do I file a claim? The claims process and form can be filed on our GPA website, and you can click on "How do I file damage claim", which will take you to the link and the actual form where you can download. Complete the damage claim form, and you may email it with your estimates and/or receipts to thedamageclaims@gpa.gwa.com email. Or visit any of our GPA locations and speak with a customer service representative. Is there a time limit for filing a damage claim? Yes, for your claim to be valid, it must be filed with GPA within 90 days of the incident that may have caused damage to your appliance or device. What information do I need to file a claim? You will need to provide your name, account number, service location, mailing address, contact information, list of appliances and/or equipment, time and date of the incident, and description of the incident that occurred. What documentation is required when filing a damage claim? When filing a damage claim, it is crucial to provide supporting documentation, including photographs of the damage, estimates, or invoices for repairs. How long does it take to process a damage claim? At GPA, it is our policy to respond to claims promptly and fairly pursuant to Guam Public Law 22-21. However, the processing time for damage claims varies depending on the complexity of the case. You may be contacted for additional information if needed. To ensure an efficient claims process, we recommend you do the following. Provide all necessary and appropriate information regarding the claim. Promptly respond to GPA's request for information or documentation. Retain copies of all invoices, estimates, and/or receipts for repairs on parts replacement. Keep damaged appliance in storage until your claim has been resolved. What happens after I submit my damage claim? After submitting your damage claim, it will be reviewed by our Claims Committee. GPA's Claims Committee is comprised of members that include line electricians, technicians, power system dispatchers, and engineers who may require inspection to validate your claim. You may be contacted for additional information if needed. The team reviews how the incident happened, whether or not it was caused by the electricity supplied by the authority and the extent of your damages, and once the review is complete, you will receive notification regarding the outcome of your claim. Will GPA pay for my new device or appliance? The damage claim program covers the cost of repairs or the depreciated value of the appliance or device. Depreciation is calculated using the depreciation guide for personal property and building materials. Is there an appeals process if my claim is denied? GPA evaluates all claims fairly. If your claim is denied, we will explain the reason for the denial in a letter mailed to you. You also have the right to appeal within 90 days from the letter notice to GPA's Utility Services Administrator. How can I contact GPA about my claim for further assistance? For additional assistance or increase related to damage claims, visit our customer service centers for assistance or contact our call center at 647-5787. Our dedicated team is here to assist you throughout the claims process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I guess I have a few other questions just to follow up with your frequently asked questions. What would be the timeline people can expect to work with on claims as they go through this process? Just so people who are going through it can kind of have a rough idea of the timetable.
Sure, so upon receipt of the claim, we did receive some tonight. So we asked that the customer receive the, excuse me, provide the completed damage claim form as well as the diagnostic or the invoice that they had to make repairs. From there, if all the documentation is complete, then we process and forward it to the Claims Committee. And from there, if the Claims Committee does have all the information they need, they will start to do the review. And typically, that could take a week or two once the Claims Committee has all the documentation. And they may contact the customer to validate the appliance, and that would require them going out to their home to review the appliance or any other questions. And then from there, it will look through meter data, any call logs or outage reports, and if it is found that there is a valid claim or the claim is eligible to receive compensation due to the power provided, then of course, it is approved. It is forwarded back to customer service. And once that claim has been approved by committee, we will then look at whether it was repair costs that we need to cover or the appliance was non-reparable, meaning it was just no use anymore. Then we would look at the depreciated value. Our team will verify the depreciated value based on the age and the life of the appliance, and then that is routed to our accounting and finance division for payment queue. And that with the Claims Committee, it could take a week or two. And then with scheduling for payment, our accounting division does have schedules on running checks. As you know, we do process a lot of checks, and that could take another week or two. So from my experience in seeing a claim that has come in and has had no issues, and the Claims Committee had met, it took about one month for us to issue the check. And keep in mind, there's a process also in having checks issued and scheduling those payouts.
Okay, thank you for that. And for people that have questions, concerns, or just need more help, what are some established channels for ratepayers to ask questions or raise concerns about their claim? And who can they contact for assistance or more information?
So they can contact our customer service division. I have also, I'm also willing, and I've always speak to customers who have further questions regarding their claim or processing. Representatives are also able to help, but I do reach out as well when we have customers that are urgently asking.
Would you be kind enough to please state the number of the customer service so anybody watching this video can just get that from your testimony?
Sure, our customer service line is 647-5787.
Thank you.
And we do have an email address. And then we do have two email addresses that I like to share. The first one for damage claims specifically is damageclaims@gpa.gwa.com. And then we also have our Customers First email address, which is customersfirst@gpa.gwa.com.
Fantastic, thank you. And will there be public reporting on the program, including number of claims filed, number of claims compensated, and the total amount of compensated distributed? Is this the sort of thing the public can follow along? Can they follow their claim online? Is that the sort of system that is in place yet?
That's a great question, and the answer is no. It's not a system that's in place yet, but we are going through the policy review right now. One of the things that we have, that we are aiming to do is to mimic the energy rebate program right now. If any of you have applied for energy rebates, it allows you to actually apply online. You put all the information online, and then you get a number, a tracking number, and you can use that number to see where your claim is. So we're going to not only make it easier to apply for it, but we're also looking at the process. So the process could just be simple. It can be a lot more simple, easier to follow, and see if we can save some time just through the process.
Okay, and I guess just one last question before I turn it over to public comment. Because I know there's many factors that go into a successful claim. But if you had to communicate one message to the public about what's the one thing that would help them get a successful claim the most, whether it be keeping receipts or whatnot, what advice would you offer to the public?
What's most important and helps us narrow down is knowing or when you experience any disruption, the date and the time helps us to quickly pull the meter data, and also having any receipts for their appliance or repairs. That also helps.
So time and place of the power fluctuation incident?
Yes.
And basically, any information and receipts regarding the appliance damage?
Correct.
Senator, if I could add, a common question, at least tonight, was where can I find a licensed technician? So be similar to weatherhead repairs. Anytime you need a licensed technician of some sort, we would recommend going to the Guam Contracting Licensing Board. They have a whole list of licensed technicians, whether it be electrical or water, and you know that that person is licensed. So we cannot ever recommend a specific technician, but we can certainly point you in that direction. James also suggested that if you remember where you bought your appliance, you can also call that store and ask them, do you have a technician? So we know that there are some special appliances, for instance, any medical devices that you may have, and that becomes sometimes very difficult to find a licensed technician. In those cases, I would definitely contact GPA Customer Service, explain a little bit more about your details, and we'll try to figure out how and who you might be able to call.
Thank you very much for that. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to anybody from the public who has any direct questions they'd like to ask GPA while we're here, or just like to share any comments or stories or anecdotes. This is your time.
Alfred, good evening. Thank you, guys, for this happiness meeting for the public. Actually, this is the first time I ever happen for how many years I've been on Guam. I'm very thankful for Senator for doing this for us people of Guam about our appliances and et cetera. My name is Jake Kanata. I'm a farmer on Guam. I produce poultry, organic eggs on Guam. Apparently, November 16 to November 19 was the fluctuation of power surge from three, three times a day or even five times. But on Sunday, it was six times. It damaged my production. For one, I had new equipment since the typhoon, and those new equipments are all damaged from this surge. For example, my fertile eggs, 900, to be exact, almost 1,000 eggs are dead cells because of this fluctuation. It burned out the eggs. It actually cooked the eggs more than hatching them. How do I get a technician to justify my eggs? There was none. How are you guys going to reimburse me on the eggs? All the eggs that we purchased from off island? To be honest, they're $10 each. And that's 900 eggs. How is GPA going to do that? Part of their scale? You guys don't have the answers for that. When I did call GPA about my CPAP machine, and they, like what the representative said, there's no technician for our medical equipment. Now who's the technician going to do my incubator? There's none. I can't afford to pay $200 for someone to come visit my house in San Diego. Yes, I'm from San Diego, coming all the way up to Gigo for this. So finding a technician to look at our appliances? There's different appliances in everybody's home. Not just TV, not just air con, not refrigerators, other appliances that are not certified. Just to ask them about the incubator, boss, we're not certified to open this. Because once they break the seal, that's it. Now for the damaged equipment, some of us threw it away because why? We had no trust in the system no more until the Senator started doing this public hearing, until we got this from the AG's office from personal emails to file claims. But some of the receipts or some of the things that you guys are asking is already out the door. Our public, our people here don't have it. We got pictures, but you're going to ask the date of the item that got? Hey, that's kind of hard, especially during typhoon. I'm still recovering from this typhoon, and I'm just, I'm getting hurt from, not from, only for GPA, but Guam Public Authority and also Guam Water Authority. So it's everywhere. I'm very thankful for Senator for doing this. Now I got to break down. I brought pictures of all the eggs, pictures of my incubator, picture of the doctor's referral for our new CPAP. But we can't get it because we're only allowed one CPAP machine for every two or three years. Now it's coming out of pocket. I got a price quote, $1,500. The insurers will not cover it no more. Now we needed most for us medical veterans, retired personnel. Now we're going to wait a month for another machine? You're not just hurting the public, but you're also hurting people with the machine that needs the most, the oxygen. So would that be a priority? Do we still got to send pictures of our machine? We don't have receipts.[1665.17] We don't have receipts. The insurers will not give us the receipt, because that's kept secret, my opinion. Because when I asked for, "Can I get a receipt where you got it?" "Oh, no, but we got it on Guam, up at Tumao." So go up at Tumao, can I get a copy of the receipt? They gave us a copy of how much it costs, a price quote, so I got that ready. But they won't give me the information for the insurance saying I got it through them. But now, they're saying, "I gotta buy it now. I gotta buy it out of my pocket." So that's something I want to bring up to you guys. Now, you guys saying, "Looking back at my check, you're gonna visit the house, customer's house." But we threw it away already. So how are we gonna justify it? That's gonna hurt us again. "Oh, we just wrote it on paper. Oh, yeah, our claim." But we're gonna hold that until you guys come out, three months? We need the space. We need to move on. We don't have the receipts. We've got pictures. Is that good enough? But how would you justify those pictures if they're actually from your residence? So that needs to be addressed to the public, what to do. If I have any more questions, I'll come back on.
Mr. Knata, thank you. And you're right. We've had incidents where people's, they came home after being off island, refrigerator full of food, refrigerator's dead. We do not expect that you are gonna keep that refrigerator until we come out. And we, you know, you did exactly, and I don't know if you saw James nodding his head, you took all of your pictures. We're not gonna expect that you're gonna still have your eggs that were, you know, that were cooked. Sorry about that. That's terrible. In the beginning of the public hearing, we did talk about the other claims, not the damage claim under this law. But there is a Government Claims Act. And so James was taking notes. And so when James contacts you again, we're gonna separate your damage claims, which covers appliances, right? And electrical equipment or equipment requiring electricity. And we're gonna also, you talked about your eggs. You can, we could file a claim for, under the claims, other than this Damage Claims Act, under the Government Claims Act. And so James will help you through that process. That's not covered here, but it is something that GPA pays out.
Yeah, that's why I'm here today. The machine's damaged. Eggs died. And I tried to get certified for these eggs, but, you know, the eggs could only survive for, what, two or three days, and they start stinking. So what I had to do is boil them all, all those eggs, and give it to those H2 workers that would need the food more than anything, you know, the bullet. So I gave it free to them. But now, it's like, who do I go to get justified of these fertile eggs that cost me an arm and a leg, and the machine has damage, which is $1,200 apiece, and plus my, you know, et cetera, et cetera? The time pattern to turn these forms in takes two weeks to review, another two weeks for justification for technicians, which I ask myself, what technicians would certify something that's already gone? You know what I mean?
Well, you're starting exactly the right step. You're taking the right step, which is here and talking to our customer service manager and our team so that we can get that claim started.
Yeah. So I took pictures, but if you guys say, "Pictures, my farm and all that stuff," but you want to come out and do an inspection, it's gone already.
Yeah, and we take that, so I'm sure you spoke to James, and I'm sure he's spoke to you about that. We take that into account.
And then when we talk about depreciation of the value of the item? I just got it in June. It broke in November. Then we processed it January. So the price is gonna drop, because I just thought, brand-new equipment, gone in seconds. That's what I meant.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak up or have a question or testimony? Sir? Oh, ma'am.
I want to add with this question regarding the depreciable value, the depreciable value of the appliances. Because if that was purchased five years ago, and the typhoon hit this year, that the salvage value is just too small, though. And it's not fair for us to pay a very small amount of money for the damaged appliances if we talk about a depreciable value.
Yeah, you are right about the depreciation of value.
For tax purposes, because I'm a tax preparer.
Right.
Like aircon, the lifespan of the aircon is five years. And if on a tax point of view, we depreciate aircon on the five years.
Right. So I don't know if you heard what James had said, how we determine the lifespan and the depreciation or the value. And so, I'm trying to find it right here. The depreciation is calculated using the industry standard Depreciation Guide for Personal Property and Building Materials. And so these are, I don't know if James mentioned it at this meeting, but this is the same type of reference that insurance companies do use. So it's industry standard. And I do understand, I had something break, and it had been working great for 10 years. I didn't need to, you know, to buy a new one. And when it did break, it was unfortunate, because it's to get a new appliance at the full total cost and basically have a very little depreciate, the value after 10 years of depreciation couldn't pay for even half of my new appliance. So I do understand. However, we need to be fair about the process. And you understand as a tax preparer that we do have to follow these industry standard guides. But that's a really good comment. Thank you.
My second question is, if you need someone to diagnose the appliances, right? And we will pay for that, for the diagnostic, like my printer, it was diagnosed by megabyte. If our claim was denied, what's gonna happen to the diagnostic fee that we paid?
So currently, as it stands, the diagnostic fee, if your claim is approved, then of course, your diagnostic fees or any fees that you incurred for them to come out and review it is actually paid back to you. But in the cases where it was found that the disruption was at no fault of the authority, then of course, it does not get paid out.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make any questions, comments, or share anything with GPA or this town hall? Go ahead, sir. Just please state your name for the record.
What happened with me is that I had a power outage. Then the power came back on, but the street light down 50 yards on the road is still blinking. So that means that there was a brownout. There's only one leg coming into the house. At the same time that the brownout was happening, my refrigerator started to, the motor started, you know, jamming up, started clanking. So I had to turn it off. I have a family. I cannot wait to go unclaim, because I have to feed my family, the kids, my grandkids, you know? So I have, the following day, I went and got a new refrigerator. So what happened is, I took the refrigerator out and I just put it outside. So the next, my next step was to go up to GPA. I went to GPA. Then they told me, they said, "Go get a technician." I cannot afford a technician. The refrigerator's still outside my house.
Have you filed a claim with us yet, or?
I still got the form, but I cannot do anything, because I don't need.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and submit that form, and we will communicate with you? And so what we can do is, basically, I could, we could pull the outage report or the meter data from that timeframe. And of course, if it is determined that it was right indeed what happened, then we can, we can't make exceptions, right? You have, you still have the refrigerator at home, so.
I have another question, but it's for waterworks. But anyways, this is from the typhoon, right? But, you know, the typhoon happened, and what happened was, I farm around my house. So I have water lines that are in property, that the trees that were damaged, that I couldn't, didn't know where, what water was, water line was broken, until the building came, and then a notice came that said, "Hey, you better check your water line, because you have an excessive water leak." And I'm still in a, in a hard, you know, rock, still in recovery. That's another $700 that came out of my pocket. Other than that, that's about it.
Unfortunately, and the water concerns that's outside the scope of these town halls, I would like to address some of the concerns people have had with utilities. So I am hoping that the GWA Chair would be calling a oversight or a town hall of some sort regarding those water issues. But for now, we're gonna have to focus on the GPA side of things for tonight. But I would like to, you know, continue this dialogue and see how else we can help with the water issues as well. But thank you for your comments, sir.
Sorry, I just wanted to address the streetlight blinking. So the streetlight blinking, that may be a separate issue. So there are photo cells, photo sensors on the top, and that could cause the streetlight to blink. But the important part is what you had said already and what James had followed up on. We will look at your meter data, because that's what matters.
Back to the appliances. Like, we can't afford the consultation of electrician to come to your house to look at your appliances, just like Mr. Frank here, because I asked him to come up here. Our appliances, like, once again, came out of the house, the refrigerator. Do you still need the serial number of the refrigerator?
Yes, that will help us. So when we go through the value, or looking up that model cost or anything to do with the depreciated value, then it helps us determine the appliance's cost or manufacturer's suggested retail price.
Hopefully, the mayor will still have the appliances that he pulled out. But I did take pictures of the unit, but not the serial number.
If you at least remember the model number or the brand.
Yeah, it's a Samsung. That's all I know is, that was paid by FEMA. So in the door, out the other.
Hi, as much as, my name is Frances Torres, and I've been a resident of Jigal since 2015. As much as we are appreciative for the program in Salafi or the $100 tax credit given to all taxpayers and the people of Guam, which we highly appreciate, why can't an open waiver something for all taxpayers? So that we can feel comfortable of coming forth and putting in these claims without having any doubts? Why go through this process? To me, it's, you open it, and then a lot of people hesitate, because, one, like for Tan Maria or Tun Jose, who are manomkus. The manomkus, for one, they don't like problems. They like to be at home and tell the grands, or tell their sons or kids, "You go and you take care of it. I give you the money, you go pay it." After that, they're okay. But for me, why can't we just have something open so that everybody can come out and put a claim? And, because the burden of proof is on the consumer, on the taxpayers. Once again, when we go through this, to me, it's just another process of going in to file these claims, and then we doubt whether we're gonna get it or not get it. And then when we don't get it, or it's disapproved, "Lan ya lai, I just wasted my time. I wasted my gas. I'm not gonna get my appliances repaired." You know, why can't we just make this more like we do with the tax credit, the $100, which people need right nowadays? That's my thing. And another thing, me as a, I'm a renter. I don't own the house. I have to deal with the landlord that's stateside, and with the time differences already on Guam to communicate with my landlord via whatever means, you know, that's a deterrent. Why can't we just make this more so that we can just come in and feel comfortable about sitting in front of your customer service rep, who I'm sure are doing a hell of a job, just like the linemen and the crewmen that are out there in the field, since Maywar, doing a hell of a job? We are very thankful. I'm thankful for all that you guys do. But the people of Guam are hurting. Some of us can't wait to get our $100 credit. I'm not one of them, but I'm glad that I can get it. But why not open it up so that everybody can file a claim and not have to worry about providing receipts, putting a model number, serial number, how many cubic, whatever it's called, you know? And some of us rely on solar to power our homes, rely on generators to fix some of these problems, and to hire a tech. At least give a waiver or something. Yeah, it may come back, but what if it's disapproved? Some of us are gonna be paying $200, and Tan Maria and Tun Jose cannot afford $200, because they're on a fixed income. They're disabled. A lot of us disabled veterans are on a fixed income. A lot of our retirees, COLA recipients of Guam, are hurting. So why not make this universal and make people comfortable to come out and fill in a claim? And then, yeah, they get denied, then they know why. If they didn't apply, that's what hurts us. We could have had the chance, but we didn't apply because we were scared. So all I want to do is speak for the unspoken. And if we can make this universal and make people comfortable to come out, and walk us through the process, because a lot of us are not tech savvy, we're not computer savvy, we're old schoolers. I do everything on my dumb phone. I don't have a working computer, laptop, iPad, whatever gadgets that are coming out nowadays. I can't even handle Facebook right now. So if it could be more friendly so that our manomkus can come out, people with disabilities can come out and feel comfortable about filing these claims, and where to go to file these claims, like when the FEMA people came out, we got all kinds of help. So why not help our taxpayers? Why not help our constituents and make this universal? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Those were very good comments, for sure. I can't speak to the making this a universal process or even the tax credits, but I do want to talk about the process and the documents that are required. We want, we do, we trust, but we have to verify. You know, the money that goes back to repay you for your claim, it's not James's, but he has to make that decision. So we are entrusted with ratepayer money, and we need to absolutely make sure that we are accountable for that. And that is, that is why, although we are trying to make the process easier, that is why we do have some of these requirements to go out and verify. You don't have your receipt? Okay, can I get the model number? Can I get all of this information? So we have an idea. When did you buy it? What was that, maybe that starting, that ballpark amount of money, right, that you paid for your initial appliance? You threw your appliance away? Do you have a picture? Right? So I am really personally grateful that all of you guys came out here. But we do have, unfortunately, some folks that claim, and the claim is bogus. So, you know, that's another reason why we have to ask these questions. We are, we have to be accountable. And that's why also we're here today, to listen to you. We heard, and you saw James and I writing some things down, some of your comments definitely are gonna be great in rethinking, reimagining our process to make it simpler.
A technician to diagnose, and if the claim was denied, then that's kind of heavy for
Right, and that's, you know, that's a good point. However, again, just to, again, the trust and verification of that. Appliances sometimes do go out and they stop working, and it's not about a power surge. It could be a defective compressor, a control board. And so that's why we ask for that technician, the technician's receipt. So if a technician came out and said, "Hey, you know, your issue is, I don't know, you know, it's something to do with your compressor," it's something like that, then when you file that claim and we see that, and then we cannot find anything, an anomaly in the power that we provided to you, then, one, we know for sure that your appliance is damaged. We know that you gave us proof of damage. And then, second is, was it caused by the power?
GPA has an independent technician who will perform the diagnostic for free?
No, because if we did have a technician that can perform the diagnostic, it would be a GPA, yeah, it would be a GPA person. And if you, you know, so we really do need an independent technician. But again, these are, I hesitate to say case-by-case basis, but this is why we encourage you to call a customer service and talk to them about what you have, what you don't have. Your claim is very different from this gentleman's claim, you know, very different from this other gentleman's claim. So as James had said before, we want to work with you to figure out what can we do to verify your claim, to be accountable. Not so that it's harder for you, but that we know, both of us and the public and the Senator, that everything has been done the correct way and that people are accountable. We don't want any abuse.
All right. Is there anybody else that has any questions or any comments they'd like to share? Sure, of course.
Now, if our app- Now, if our application is turned in and we had no verification from a technician, but we still have evidence of our appliances, like you say, you can't tell or justify whether or not our appliances were damaged from this surge, but we have pictures, evidence and proof that it was from it, regardless if we even have that power surge protector, that's bogus. They'll still serve out everything, but it, it does eliminate a lot. But my appliances that were just bought, were just, I don't know how to say, because the house is built in 1979, could be an issue. But the refrigerator is gone already, the appliance is damaged. I did what I did for typhoon again, take pictures, take the serial number and all that, but got rid of the evidence because I didn't know about this program until it started kicking in from the AG's office and Senator Parkinson. So it was kind of late to go back and try and get a technician certification. Would our application be red flag or how? Can you help us on this?
We'll still push your, your claim through the process and we'll, we'll look at every, every, um, if there were, we'll look at the meter data. That's why we need the timeframe. And if we do determine that, yep, there was a, a disruption or any fluctuation that happened and, and that may have attributed and the timeline matches up, because not only looking at meter data, we also look at trouble call logs or trouble reports that crews did respond to. So that also helps us in determining, right? And, and like we mentioned earlier, it's just, we just need to validate the appliances. But it's very good that you did take photos.
We, I also got screenshots of our Senator WhatsApp chat group about, oh, number five, number six power outage. Is that good enough for your evidence?
That works. I, I actually have, I did see that in one of our claims that did come in through a village chat, different village, but same, same thing.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, everyone, for your questions and comments tonight. This is the third of our five scheduled town halls and, um, this process has been very illuminating for me too. Um, as we've been going through this process, there have been two issues that have particularly struck me. One is that, um, with the complexity of the different appliances, that, um, people are correct, sometimes it's hard to get a tech to validate your appliances because sometimes the techs, uh, it might be outside the scope of their expertise. Um, you know, maybe there's just no techs available to get things done in a timely manner. So, you know, that's something we should definitely review in our processes, maybe might require some tweaking of the legislation, of the language itself to, uh, account for the different appliances and types of technicians required to validate these claims. And then the other thing that really struck me was the timeline of claims and medical devices. If everyone could grant me some, uh, some latitude here, I myself, uh, I, I, I use a medical device. I, uh, was diagnosed with sleep apnea. And apparently I've been living with sleep apnea for most of my adult life, like almost 20 years now. But I've only gotten that problem solved probably in the last year when I first, when I finally got insurance for the first time in my life. And, um, I got to admit, it was very much a life changer for me. You know, the amount of sleep I needed, just the changes in the quality of my life were just night and day. And I can't see myself living without this medical device anymore. And so when people have medical devices that get damaged and even in the best case circumstances, they're still waiting a month to get that claimed, uh, that's a real inconvenience to, uh, their lives. And so one of the things as I, at, at least I've been toying about with this process, and this is a sort of a dialogue, uh, GPA and I could go back and forth with, but I'll, you know, maybe, maybe it's time to consider that at, at least for medical device claims, maybe we have some sort of preapproval where we just, we'll help in the beginning and no questions asked, we'll just, you know, we'll, we'll preapprove a little bit, preauthorize, and we'll do the investigation later and we'll, you know, we'll square up the details later. Maybe, maybe if they don't end up being the cause, maybe if the power fluctuations aren't the cause of the medical devices, you know, maybe we could work something out, some sort of repayment. But at least in the interim, in the short term, when these devices fail and people need the most, maybe we can get some relief to people. Especially because with medical devices, I imagine there's not that many claims and I don't fear fraud and abuse with that so much because, man, you got to have a real cold heart to be making false claims on medical devices, so. And, and stories like that, sir, like, that you're, it's not the first we've heard of it and we've heard many people say, I've had medical device get damaged. And so like, I mean, this is a whole, whole new issue and an added layer of complexity to this issue that I never considered when we started this process. I never considered people's devices and how important that is. And I think that's really, if anything, that's really one of the big things I'm really taking away from this is we got to get these people to help.
Uh, Senator, I want to acknowledge that, uh, so last, okay, sorry. Uh, I wanted to acknowledge that even last night, um, you and I had spoken, we said that until, if you want to amend the law, but until that changes or something else, we will prioritize the medical claims. And, uh, just, you know, thinking about, um, what everyone had said here, this law that, that your father passed was in 1993. So 30 years ago, there was not a proliferation of medical device, at home, medical devices like we do have now. So these are, uh, these are some of the things that we do have to take into consideration when considering what, um, the types of appliances, um, folks could claim.
Absolutely. New times, new problems, and we got to adjust with the times. So if there are no further questions or comments, this will conclude our discussion regarding damage claims. GPA will still be around for a little bit for anyone that needs any further additional support or assistance with their claims. Um, we will be having two more. I believe our next one is tomorrow. My, I'm sorry, Monday, MT, uh, Monday at Momom Toto Maiti, um, Mayor's Office, at the community center, yes. Um, the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance will continue to accept written testimonies, comments or questions on tonight's meeting within five business days from today, which will be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 905 of the DNA Building in Agonya. You may also send your written testimony to my office via email at senatorparkinson@guamallegislature.org. Thank you all for your participation. This town hall is adjourned and the time is now 7:12.